Oh, one P.M. I am calling to order the regular Board of Trustees meeting. And tonight, in lieu of our invocation, I received news that a former village trustee and a member of several committees over the years, longtime resident of North Hudson, Mary Kruger, has passed away. And she was a very great asset to the community. She volunteered. She was always in good spirits. And they're having a service, memorial service, this Friday, 2:00 P.M. at O'Connell's. And I'd just like to have a moment of silence to, you know, say a prayer for Mary. Item number two is review and approve minutes from regular board meeting from 3:00 May 2016.
Dan, can I move approval?
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Brian, is there any corrections or amendments? Hearing none, all in favor of the board minutes is approved. Signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item number three.
Did we do a roll call?
Oh, we skipped roll call. Sorry about that. Melissa?
Trustee Head?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
O'Brien, Burgum. Abson, Page?
Here.
President Wecken?
Here.
Trustee Zace?
Here.
Zappa?
Here.
Thank you, Ted. Somebody's keeping me in line. Okay, item number three, comments from the floor. Opportunity for residents to make the board aware of topics, issues, opportunities either on or not on today's agenda. And I think that that's... Nobody's here with anything for that, so we will go on to item number four, which is the 2016-2017 Class A/B alcohol beverage licenses, cigarette licenses, amusement permits. Approval requested. Okay, and the first one is alcohol beverage license renewal, Class Perrin A/ Perrin Class A for Village Liquor Store.
Dan, can I move, may I move to approve the Class A fermented malt beverages and Class A intoxicating liquor license for TK Interests, Inc., DBA Village Liquor Store, Kimberly White Agent, with an effective date of July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017, as recommended by the village clerk. All license approvals are contingent upon any outstanding payment obligations to the village being satisfied.
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
I'll second it, Stan.
Ted?
Yep.
Thank you. Discussion. Hearing none. We don't need a roll call on this, but I will be abstaining from this since I help Kim out as a part-time clerk. So, all in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next is the alcohol beverage license renewal, Class A beer and Class A cider only for Freedom Value Center.
Dan, may I move to approve the Class A fermented malt beverage license and Class A cider-only license for Freedom Value Centers, Inc., DBA Freedom Value Center, number 72, Paul Kirk Agent, with an effective date of July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017, as recommended by the village clerk. All license approvals are contingent upon any outstanding payment obligations to the village being satisfied.
Thank you, Mark. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Brian. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, signify as saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item three, alcohol beverage license renewals for Class B/ Class B for a list of the local taverns in town. Do we have a motion?
Man, I don't know if I have enough glue for my plate.
You need water? Somebody else?
Anybody else can jump in here.
Ryan, you want to read this one?
Do you have to get that denture fixed?
I was waiting on the Mark Zappa one here. That's for the cigarettes?
No, this is for Class B.
Dan, may I move to approve the Class B fermented malt beverages and Class B intoxicating liquor license with an effective date of July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017, for LDJT, Inc., DBA The Village Inn, Leo Halverson Agent, Stars Bar, Inc., DBA Stars Bar, William Suter Agent, Xanner, Inc., DBA Cozy Corner, Scott Nelson Agent, Lambden, Inc., DBA Mama Maria's Restaurante, Anna Maria Burr Agent, Seasons Tavern, BDC LLC, DBA C Seasons Tavern, Brad Reivers Agent, and Gov's Place, Inc., DBA Gov's Place, Jessica Thompson Agent, as recommended by the village clerk. All license approvals are contingent upon any outstanding payment obligations to the village being satisfied.
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion on that?
I will sustain for the vote for this one.
Okay, thank you. Kirk, anything else? Okay, all in favor of the motion, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now, the next one, or usually included in that, we had an issue with the, or the chief has brought up a issue with the Malu Inn. And it's, if everybody's looked at their notes that we received with the packet, we've had, the agent has had an infraction that, whereas the governing body has the ability to issue, you know, the license, but it is something that should, we had to discuss over the, from the other ones, or was this one had an issue? I don't know how to bring it about and talk about it, but if you look at your notes, after a background check, where, you know, the question is Peggy Multer, and she is in the audience, for the conviction of OWI, and that's something that the board should review. I would, you know, so that we have, Ed and the chief, I think, will confirm, is there has not been any issues with the premises or with the business where we haven't had any issues, but it's something that we have to review in order to do our due diligence. So, we need a motion first and discuss there.
Yeah, just, can I say a couple things?
Yes, absolutely.
So, part of what you're doing when you're renewing liquor licenses is making sure that the applicant, or if it's a corporation, which it is in this case, the applicant's agent is fit to hold that license. And the law does say if a person has felonies or is a habitual offender, that you do need to at least give that some consideration. And in this case, we have an OWI. The agent has an OWI more than a year ago, although it, you know, it's there. And so, it's your duty to kind of just look at that a little bit and make sure that that agent has the right, is the right person, you know, to be operating that establishment, that you're not concerned about the safety of the village.
Thank you, Terry.
Oh, and one other quick thing.
Yeah.
So, tonight, you have a choice of either renewing it, that would be one option, or you can't just non-renew it tonight. You would have to initiate a process where there would have to be a notice given to the applicant and then a hearing, that there is going to be a hearing about whether or not to renew. So, your choices tonight are renew or begin a process of non-renewal, not the actual vote to non-renew.
So, question. Under the instructions that you have for renewal, I don't see anything listed here other than partnerships, corporation changes, limited liability. Is there something more that says, I mean, it does have a conviction section and pending charge section?
On the application you're talking about or on the memo?
Well, I'm looking at the application. I'm looking at everything that we've got on, in Mark's thing.
What's the question?
My question is, does the law say that this person is not able to operate?
No.
But we're supposed to look at what they've done and say whether they're good to operate or not? I don't follow.
The big picture is that the board is supposed to evaluate applicants for liquor licenses and make sure that they're fit to hold that liquor license. That's the big picture.
Is there a liability to us?
No. Okay.
So, question. So, this is only done on an annual basis, and that's why we're here tonight? This is why I bring this? Okay.
Yeah. All liquor licenses are renewed on an annual basis, with just a couple little exceptions that you guys don't have.
Okay, thank you.
So, the same type of discussions come up when we have license to serve.
Yes.
Right? We've been over this before numerous times.
Good.
And I think, generally speaking, if it's not been a habitual issue, we're not standing here in judgment.
And when you say license to serve, are you talking to like bartenders?
Yep.
Okay.
Although I think that the statute looks at those a little bit differently because the agent has more control over the entire business.
Sure.
Versus the bartender or the beverage server. And so, that's why they tend to get a little bit more analysis. Just quickly, to Brian's point, this is a state form. We don't have, this application has nothing to do, you know, the village doesn't put it together. But the one that truly want to take a look at would have been during last year's is the number C, or letter C, 6A. And that's where the information kind of came out of, that we were able to look at. And if you look at my memo, there is a section, the second to last paragraph talks about statute 12504, 6A1, where the agent's character, record, and reputation must be satisfactory to the issuing authority. So, I mean, there's no black and white in that. It's just, it's up to you as the issuing authority what you want to do with the licenses and under that statute. That's, my role typically is just to bring you the facts and let you make the decision.
Yeah. It's definitely a large gray area. I mean, if you had a bar where there were shootings, you know, and where the police were being called on a very regular basis, and people driving away from there were being arrested for, you know, various bad things on a regular basis, that would be, you know, the kind of the one end of the extreme where you probably should non-renew that license. The other end is just, you know, here we have a bar that, there are no problems, right? There are no police calls.
Correct. We do not get calls on that.
Seems like it's a pretty reasonable business, and so then you have a driscollary call there, but it's probably, I don't make the decisions here, but it's probably more toward the other end, if it seems to me.
So, chief, on your statement in that second to the last paragraph there, that they did not update you during the 2015 thing when they had the incident, is that an expectation requirement, or what is that?
And it wouldn't be to update me, it would be to update the board.
The board.
Of a change in status.
Okay.
And again, it comes back to that, you know, there's a part of the statute that talks about if there are substantial changes, or if the agent falls out of that, I guess, that approval status, that's when you would make that change. And again, it was just a factual statement.
Okay.
For you to consider.
Yeah, it also has a factual perspective. We have denied liquor licenses to people with an OWI on their record.
I did not know that.
Probably not an actual bar license, though?
Yep.
More of an operator license, a bartender license? No.
No, bar license.
But what if that were to came to us ahead of time, yet we only do this on an annual basis? What, we just waited to that annual basis then?
No, there's statutory language that you can suspend and revoke licenses as well, but there's, that kind of calls out some specifics.
I think the point I'm making is that, for a little perspective, these, while we're relaying state statutes, and to some degree, they're a guideline, Mark's, the chief's providing the information, I'll only bring up the incident that I was referring to, is that it was a new application and was denied, and there was, you know, there was no background thing. It was just, you come before this board and you've got a conviction against you. It makes it hard to approve that. Now, in this particular case with the Multers, who've been down there for years and have a good track record down there, that's a different aspect.
Okay.
But I'm just giving you, that's...
Yeah, it helps.
An incident that has happened, and that's the purview of the board at the time, but I'm not implying that this gets denied at all.
Okay.
Because I think there should be a lot said for the activity of the bar, the history of the bar, and the troublesome aspect of it, if there is any. I don't, I'm not suggesting there is any there, but at the same time, when the chief brings this information to us, we overturn a lot of it, but that's on the server's side when there's, you know, people present their case, and a lot of times, the owner, the establishment, is willing to stand by in the server. My theory is if they're willing to stand by that employee, they have more to lose with that.
Right.
I don't think the incident involved, what we were talking about in the Malu Inn's case, reflects on how the bar is going to operate myself. That's my personal belief.
And the conviction was in Minnesota, not in Wisconsin?
Frankly, I don't even care if it was in Wisconsin. I don't think there, I don't know if it's a related thing.
Right.
But that's my personal belief.
No.
It was a February 15 deal, and we're looking at them to fill this out. When did they fill this out?
May.
May of '16?
Again, I'm not quite following you, but there were, there are two applications in your packet. There's the one from the previous, not calendar year, from the previous year, license year. Licenses go from July 1st to June 30th each year, all of them. So, you have the one from, what would that be, 2014, 2015? And you have the new one, no, 2015, 2016? And then the new one from 2016, 2017 in front of you. And in that time period, there was one OWI.
The largest thing I'd like to stress right now at this point is getting a liquor license in any community is a privilege, and due to state laws and stuff, there's a lot of responsibility with it. And the part I feel, I wish I could correct, is when these situations are brought for us, before us, it puts us in an awfully difficult spot. And everyone, I don't think anybody on the board wants to interfere with the operation of a business that's operating properly and all that, but when we're confronted with these legal situations, it puts us in a spot where we have to make this kind of judgment, if you will. And I only ask that you, you know, review your situation and understand the privilege of having a license and what goes with it, and make life a little easier for us. You know, that's where I get disappointed in seeing this, because most of the people who have liquor license know the ins and outs of the liquor license and what they can do and can't do to maintain the ownership of that license.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah. So, we can call for a motion. Any other discussion? I mean, we could, or we could call for a motion too.
Stan, I'd just like to note that this is the fourth OWI, for the record.
Yep. But, so we call for a motion to approve? Anybody would like to make that motion?
I'm going to, I'll move to approve because I don't know of any other way around it right now. And I would like to see the business continue on, and this is unfortunate circumstance. I just, you know, we don't have this with the other license holders, and, you know, if it becomes a situation, I guess we'll have to deal with that when that materializes. But given the track record of the Multers in North Hudson, I, without, I'll move to approve their license.
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
With the greatest hope that we don't have to deal with this again.
Is...
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving the motion? Signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
And so, the motion is approved, and as Mark was so eloquently put, please, you know, I mean, or possibly look into another agent. I mean, so that, yeah, because it is, I mean, chief does his work, and, you know, and like I said, we like having businesses in town, and you've got a great track record down there, so please, you know, I always tell my sons, smart choices. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's see. Oh, where are we? Now, we've got cigarettes next.
We've got a couple more, tobacco and something else.
Tobacco next.
Stan, may I move to approve the over the...
We're going to take, the batteries died in the Energizer Bunny battery dies.
Exercise my...
We're good?
Yep.
Okay, now you can go for cigarettes.
Motion to, Stan, may I move to approve the over-the-counter tobacco sales license for Stars Bar, The Village Inn, North Hudson School, Village Liquor Store, Malu Inn, Freedom Value Center, and Gov's Place with an effective date of July 1, 2016 through June, did I say North Hudson School?
Yes, you said North Hudson School, I thought.
That's true about that story, yeah.
That's going to get a no.
With an effective date of July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017, as recommended by the village clerk.
Thank you, Mark. That'll make our, is there a second? A little preview?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Any further discussion? The school is out, just for clear. All in favor?
I was joking.
Yeah, all in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And the last is coin-operated amusement license.
Why not? Stan, may I move to approve the coin-operated music license for, amusement license for Stars Bar, The Village Inn, Gov's Place, Malu Inn, Cozy Corner, and Seasons Tavern, with an effective date of July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017, as recommended by village clerk.
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Any further discussion?
Stan, I'll sustain from this.
Okay, thank you. Kirk. All in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the licenses are done for another year. Let's see. Next is the 2016-2017 fireworks permit, application, Mark Zappa of Exit One Fireworks, approval requested.
Stan, I'd like to move to approve the application for the fireworks paraphernalia, sale permit for Mark Zappa with the following inclusions. No smoking signs must be displayed, fire extinguishers available, no fireworks sold to persons under 18 years of age, permit length to be July 1 to June 30, July 1, 2016 to June 30, 2017.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? And hearing none, all in favor? Mark will be recusing himself, Melissa. And all in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, motion carries. Okay, next is Resolution 2016-04, Department of Natural Resources, Review of Compliance, Maintenance Annual Report, C Mar, approval requested.
Stan, may I move to approve Resolution Number 2016-04?
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? This is an annual report that Mr. Ekblad has to file with the state, and we have always been in compliance, to best of my awareness, and so, if there's any further discussion? All in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And let's see, next is new business from the border staff versus president's comments, and I'm going to be less long-winded than normal, and I'm going to say happy Father's Day to all the fathers, which is coming up in a couple of weeks. And I hope everyone has a safe and happy Independence Day, which will be happening before we meet the next time. So, have fun and, but be safe. Thank you. Gloria?
I just wanted to let the board know that we're researching, changing accounting packages in an attempt to save some funds and get a better package. The payback should be about two years. I'm not ready to bring all the details forward, but I just want you to keep it in the back of your head so that, you know, when it comes forward, you're not surprised.
Thank you.
That's it.
Melissa, anything?
Nothing for me.
No elections till, well, we'll talk about elections next month.
August, yes. One in August.
All right. Thank you. Let's see. Item number eight is plan commission. They did not meet. Item nine is personnel and finance committee recommendations. Claims is first?
Good data.
If you have a motion...
Stan, I will, assuming I'm on the right page.
I think so.
I would suggest to the board that we move to approve the June 2016 non-recurring claims of $42,735.62.
Thank you, Ted. Is there a second?
Second.
You, Mark?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, I'm just trying to keep up so that it gets on the minutes. And this does include the, this includes the final payment for the road project from last year, I believe, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, and this is a spending claim. Tim? Yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. And B is amendment of the 2016 budget for street maintenance, approval requested?
Stan, I recommend a move to amend the Village North Hudson 2016 annual budget to cover the additional costs of crack filling, hot patching, and seal coating as recommended by the Public Works Committee in an amount not to exceed $22,000.
Thank you. Brian, is there a second?
I'll second. Stan.
Thank you. Kirk. Further discussion? Hearing none, and suspending issue. Kirk?
Yes. C.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. And C, 10, is Public Works Committee Recommendation Share Update. Brian?
I don't have any updates beyond what we have in B, C, and D.
Based on the street filling was the, or crack filling bids, need motion for that? For B?
I move to have Scott Construction, Inc., crack fill the 49 streets listed on the proposal at a cost not to exceed $32,614.20, with a budget deficit of $12,614.20, coming from undesignated funds.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, and it is a spending issue. Tim?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Take care of our streets. And C, Brian?
I'd like to move to have Farner Asphalt Sealers hot patch the 48 areas of streets listed on the proposal at a cost not to exceed $18,800, with a budget deficit of $4,800, coming from undesignated funds.
Brian, is there a second?
I'll second, Stan.
Thank you, Kirk. Any further discussion on the hot patch? Hearing none. Let's see, I think it's Kirk's turn this time.
Yes. Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Wonderful. Seal coating.
I'd like to move to have Allied Blacktop Co., our company, seal coat the seven streets listed on the proposal at a cost not to exceed $29,315.09, with a budget deficit of $4,315.09. with a budget deficit of four thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars and nine cents, coming from undesignated funds.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
I'll second, Stan.
Thank you, Kirk. Any further discussion on that? Okay, Tim?
Yes. Yes.
Yes? Brian?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Ananmas, thank you. So, that takes care of public works. Public Safety, Mark?
I think we have one action item that's, Chief, would you wanna, the donation of the radios?
Sure.
I can move, I'll move to donate the retired Motorola radios to the Pepper Festival.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, Stan.
Thank you, Kirk. Chief?
Hopefully, my issue statement is, is relatively straightforward. We retired a number of Motorola radios after the la, or when we purchased the new ones last year. They've been sitting in a box, and I know that in conversations with some of the board members of Pepper Fest, that they have a need based on some changes that they had, losing some equipment that they thought they were gonna have available to them. So, I am asking that the board approve the donation to the Pepper Fest of the radios, the batteries, and all the accessories that came with those radios.
Very good. Any questions for the chief for understanding of what this is? I mean, they use it for their security and for, you know, their comms with
And for their communication with us and with other board members, yeah, it's very useful on that, in that weekend.
Okay, that sounds great. Any other comments or questions?
I think it's a great idea.
And this isn't really spending, so all in favor of the motion to donate the retired Motorola radios to the Pepper Festival? Signal five was saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Let's see, public welfare, I don't believe met. And Park Board, Chair update, the chair is absent, and I don't believe there's anything pressing from the Park Board. So, it looks like the last item on the agenda is, we would be adjourned at seven thirty-four.
Thank you, Stan.
Thank everyone, and I hope you have a wonderful evening.